Special meeting of State County Order Supervisors. We're meeting in the public meeting room and public access being provided by Zoom. And it's because of the COVID-19 pandemic that we are not allowing in-person access. So I would go ahead then and entertain a motion for adoption of today's agenda. So move.
Second.
Okay, Edens.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Agenda is adopted. Next, we have public comment number one, and this comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. And I'm just trying to look and see if there are any members of the public on who might want to address them. What I'd like to do is if anybody does come on and you do want to talk about either of the two additional items, we'll allow public comment for those, particularly if there might be some interest in one of them, and I'd like to have that public comment after just been presentation, because that would give some more information. So is there, are there any members of the public who would like to address any other topics on today's agenda? If so, would you raise your hand or unmute yourself? Do you see anybody? Okay, seeing no one, I will close public comment session and go on to additional items. And the first one is consideration Hickory Grove Park Road Resurfacing Bid Award from Manass seeing for $26,367.12. This was moved from Tuesday's agenda because the Conservation Board had yet, was not able to meet Monday night. So Mike Cox, are you on the line?
I am. Can you hear me? So thank you for your time this morning, and thank you for shifting this from Tuesday's meeting to today. The Conservation Board did meet yesterday and did pass this with a recommendation for award by the Board of Supervisors today. To give you a little bit of history, the park road at Hickory Grove that is currently asphalt, that is currently asphalted, this bid is to re-asphalt that section with the addition of a very small section that would be new asphalt in front of our entrance kiosk and a very small section that would be new asphalt near the new boat launch as well. So that's, that is the scope of this project. It has needed this for a number of years. We knew that we had the lake renovation project coming in the, in the near future at the time when we identified this. So we made the decision to hold off because of that lake renovation project. Now that that is complete, that heavy truck traffic on the road certainly didn't do any favors to the asphalt, and so it's as expected and worse condition now than it was prior. So it's been, been identified as a need. We went ahead and we budgeted for it in FY '21. We released bids a couple of weeks ago and now have the bids back. We received two bids. The low bid was from Manass at $206,000, and we're asking your approval today to award that bid to Manass and move forward with, then with contracting.
Any questions?
This is Lisa. I do have a question for you. So I noticed that the, what was budgeted or what the, they thought it would be was around $180,000, and this is about $26,000 increase. Can you explain that increase a little bit more?
Sure. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna back up even a little bit further. When we budgeted for this, we reached out to a contractor to give us a, give us an estimate for it. And we instructed that contractor at that time to give us an estimate not on current market prices, but on a forecasted market price for this year. That estimate came in at $155,000 for the same scope of work. We added about 16%, 15% contingency to that and put it at 180 in the budget. We're very thankful for Secondary Roads, which their engineers, their staff put this bid package together for us. And they did an independent cost opinion. And that cost opinion is what you see in the bid documents here in the bid tabulation. So that cost opinion, it just reaffirmed our budget number. And I guess I should add on that, that Tyler at Secondary Roads who put this together for us thought that that was a very liberal cost opinion on his part, that he thought the bids would come in low, well below that. So it was a surprise to everyone, I guess, when the bids came in this much higher. I feel like we did our due diligence in budgeting and cost estimating and market bore different results than what we were expecting. So, does that answer your question, Lisa?
Yeah, so are you then looking, so I guess my other question is, where are you looking for the other revenue? Or are you gonna delay something else because of that cost increase?
Yeah, I mean, the good thing is that we're so early in the fiscal year. We, I think we're gonna be able to take this out of the existing, out of our existing budget. So that's what I'm asking, is that we just go ahead and spend it, overspend that line item in the budget, and then we'll, we will look for ways that we can offset that increase throughout the remainder of the fiscal year.
Okay, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Yep.
Supervisor Olson.
I have not. Supervisor had to ask them. Thank you.
Okay, and I'd already heard that explanation, which is why I didn't ask it. Thank you, Mike. Then if there are no further questions, I would entertain a motion for approval of the Hickory Grove Park Road Resurfacing Bid Award to Manass.
I would still move.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Olson.
Aye.
Edens.
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Approved. Okay, next we're gonna go to the draft letter to DOT. And I'm gonna ask the person who's running Zoom for us, if, see that arrow on the upper corner and the blue dot? If you hit that, Mike, there, we see if there's more people on the call. Okay. I was just wondering, because I see that we have, let's see, we have Darren Moon on the call, and we have Jordan Cook from the city of Nevada. Can you go back the other way now? I was just wanting to see.
Go back to the blue arrow on the far left.
To the left. The blue to the left. Okay. So I didn't see Mike up there.
I think he put 232.
Ah, yeah.
Yep, that was him calling.
Okay. So next, discussion of consideration of a draft letter to the Department of Transportation to give comments on interchange options on Highway 30 near Nevada, and county engineer Darren Moon is on the phone, or on the, on the Zoom call.
Yes.
Darren, can you get that to us and an explanation? And do you have that map? Can you display the map? Or?
I am not able to display it.
Okay, I'll just tell everybody then, there's a map that's attached to the agenda.
Yeah. That might be a little bit moot anyway, based on City of Nevada's action last night, but yeah, was able to watch the city council meeting with Nevada last night, and they did make a decision in recommending what they would like to see. The letter I drafted was kind of based more on, there used to be a task force put in place a few years back that came up with a plan that had some county officials on the task force. But that recommended the interchange at Sixth Street and 600th Avenue. That is not what the city went forward with last night. They chose to put the interchange at Airport Road. So for the most part, the letter I drafted somewhat still stands. I think the first sentence of paragraph one, we would probably have to delete that, because we would recommend that the DOT lengthen the bridge, but that's only for a future interchange there. If we feel like we're gonna support what Nevada did and not recommend the interchange at Sixth, we'd probably not recommend a lengthened bridge anymore. They go with the standard bridge, so they wouldn't need the ramps. Paragraph two would probably be deleted, except for the last sentence where it says if a future interchange is not possible at 600th, we would at least like to recommend an overpass bridge be built over Highway 30 at 600th to give farm traffic a safe crossing on their way to the co-op on Lincoln Way. Other things just to consider based on Nevada's action, if we go ahead and support the City of Nevada, we will see some increased traffic, in my opinion, on South S Avenue, mainly for S-14 North traffic that want to go eastbound on Highway 30. They're probably gonna, a lot of them will skip over on South S now instead of backtracking west on Maple to get onto Highway 30. That's just something we'll have to deal with in the future. Keep in mind, interchange plans are currently not in the DOT's five-year program, so we could be talking five years plus before any of this actually happens. This S, or Sixth Street Bridge will happen sooner than that, but the interchanges, we're not sure on the timing of yet. As I kind of noted in my letter, this will stay the same recommendation. When the DOT does that Sixth Street Bridge, I'm recommending they go ahead and pave Maple Avenue and 610th at that time, because that'll have to be paved anyway when they put the interchange in Airport Road. And then if this plan goes forward that the city recommended, 600th will close at some point. Yes, one positive to that, there is a possibility in the future of the city connecting in a frontage road for development towards that area, so that would, they'd still be able to have some use of 600th pavement that we did a few years back, so it wouldn't be, you know, a complete loss, dead-end pavement. And the letter already states, we would at least like to recommend an overpass over 600th if they go with Nevada's recommendation. And the letter also already states that we'd also like to see Airport Road improved to the north with curb and gutter taking out to allow better farm access along that road too, if that's where the interchange goes. But yeah, depending which way the board wants to go, there's gonna have to be some edits to the letter either way, so kind of turn it over to the board at this point, and where you'd like to see our recommendation lie.
Why don't I first recognize Jordan Cook, because he did ask to be, if he could talk today. And then we'll work and discuss after he's presented. Is that all right with everybody?
That's fine.
Jordan, could you unmute yourself, introduce yourself, and explain what you'd like to do to us?
Hello, everybody. I'm Jordan Cook. I'm the city administrator here in Nevada. And yes, last night at the council meeting, the council did vote 5-1 in favor of Airport Road for a few different reasons. The main reason is really the economic development, the possibilities that are available in the industrial business district over there off of Airport Road. And if I would be able to share my screen, or if Linda can pull up her email, or Darren can, I just sent them a map of kind of our future plans over in that area, which allows West A to connect up to Osage, and Osage to connect down into Sixth, which would allow access to the overpass and over to Maple, which I agree with Darren, I think we definitely need to get them to pave that, that road as well. That way they can get over to the interchange at Airport. But a big reason was the economic development possibilities over there. Another things that, some other things that played the role was the increased traffic into our downtown, heavy traffic, something that we would really like passenger vehicles to use, and we really want our downtown to have that walkability access. And we also want to connect the south side of Nevada into the north side of Nevada. About a third of our population lives over in that south development. And with this overpass at Sixth Street, we will be able to build a pedestrian bridge for access over there. So those were really the big points that were touched on at the meeting. I would be more than happy to answer any questions that you have. I can send out maps to you guys to understand where we are planning on growing. You know, it's, there's a lot of opportunity heading west towards Ames, and Ames heading east towards Nevada, and we thought that this was the best decision for the future, for the long future of Nevada. But yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, and I would be more than happy to send out any, any documents that we have that would help kind of show you more of what, what the plans are for the future.
Jordan, this is Linda. You have to share your screen to show the map.
Okay. I am not the greatest at Zoom, but I will try to share my screen if I can actually figure out how to do that.
At the bottom of your screen, do you see a green that says share screen?
Yeah, right in front of my face. Yeah, I see that. Yeah, thank you. Let's see here. Okay, so this is where I was talking about the overpass you can see on Sixth right here. We really would like to tighten this curve up a little bit. That way people, any, any person that is getting off of Highway 30 at Airport Road, they can just get over here and just swing up and go to Sixth Street, so you're not really losing access. You are losing access to that at-grade intersection, but you're still having access to downtown. The other thing that we were talking about last evening was maybe making this a little bit different, so people didn't have to stop and they could just go on there. But this is the development that I was talking about, connecting these roads to Sixth and West A up to F, and having everything connected. And then eventually, you know, as you saw, you probably all saw the 600th Avenue plan that the task force had, they had a road being built here for the future. That's still a possibility, but it allows the city of Nevada to develop this, and it will help with our tax base, and it'll allow us to have more future development over here on the west. So everything that the task force was talking about, that's still, still a strong possibility and is not affected by this decision. But the things that, you know, Darren touched on, this will increase traffic on Sixth Street, or on Airport Road, more heavier traffic. The plus side is, the heavier traffic won't be going into our downtown. A lot of people will be able to just walk around, and that's what we're trying to achieve. We want to be able to achieve a safe, active downtown, and we believe that the Sixth Street, the way it's designed in this photo, will capitalize on that best.
This is Supervisor Olson, and so I'd like you to define heavier, because heavier as in just, are vehicles, or heavier as in farm equipment?
Heavier as in farm equipment and semis and things like that. So the other thing that we're talking with the DOT about, we've already gotten estimates on, is redeveloping this, this road at Airport due to the heavier traffic, and we want to be able to allow access to farm equipment. As you all probably know, right now, it is virtually impossible for farm equipment to go down that road unless they're taking up the whole road. We would need to extend that by probably 10 feet, because right now I believe it's 28 feet from back of curb to back curb. I believe we would probably need to do at least 30, 35 to 38 feet for that. Darren would probably have a better idea with that for the actual dimensions, but yes, so we, the heavier traffic that I was referring to is the farm equipment and the semis that will be utilizing this road to get to their, their businesses that they need to be at.
And then my follow-up question is, going down to Airport Road, where it connects with Lincoln Highway, old Lincoln Highway, right? What are, what plans did you, did the council consider about that as far as traffic control there?
Yep, so Brian, I think it was Brian last night that touched on that, that if we, if we do have that intersection, it is going to increase, it is going to get busier, which will increase the, the safety that we have, increase the lack of safety, I guess. So something Brian mentioned was kind of renovating that area and maybe eventually doing some sort of a higher visibility, either stoplight or, or something along those lines. But yeah, with that traffic increase, we will need to figure out and probably do some sort of a, a traffic study. That way we can figure out what the best route for the safety of, of everyone traveling in and out of Nevada through that.
Well, I heard a lot of wiggle, what I call wiggle words there, probably, maybe, is in the future sometime, or whatever. So the items that are actually in yellow right now, those are the buy-in from the council then, and what you're describing later on would be, I mean, there's no guarantee on whatsoever?
Right, and there's no guarantee on the DOT programming this within the next five years either. But the development and the growth that we want to see in Nevada follows this plan that we have right here that you're looking at. We want to provide growth. We want to have housing. We want to have industry. We want to build the economic side of, of Nevada more than what we have in the past. And we believe that this, this road and the way this is set up is the best route for that.
Thank you.
But yeah, a lot of things are, they're a possibility, they're, they're not set in stone, they're proposed plans, you know? So we have a lot, a lot to figure out. The thing that we need to talk to the DOT about is getting these roads accomplished and starting that process.
I have some questions, but Supervisor Edens, do you want to go first?
Sure. I just have a couple of questions for you, Jordan. So on Maple Street, so is that all currently paved, or is that gonna need to be paved?
I believe it is paved from about right here, well, from here all the way over. I do not think it is paved from right here over right now. That is something that we will be asking the DOT, is we do want that paved. So far, we've heard a lot of complaints from citizens that are living in this area about the gravel and how rough it is and everything. So that is something that we really would like to, to make happen, is getting that Maple Street paved for everybody traveling that road. And it makes sense to pave it if the interchange does actually go there like the council wants as well as DOT.
Sure, and then I guess I'm just looking at potentially increased traffic through that particular area as well. I don't know what your development plans are necessarily in there. I'm just trying to think of if you've got semis or whatever coming off potentially to connect up, you know, to go into Sixth Street and all. Are you taking that into consideration? And would you also need to have that particular road widened as well?
Well, that's why, that's why we are choosing the Airport Road, because we do not want heavy traffic down Sixth Street. We want to keep the heavy traffic away from our citizens, our downtown, because whenever you're having the heavy traffic, it decreases the safety aspect of it for the walkability, for the, for, for people to be able to walk around freely. But that is, that is the reason why we chose Airport, or not the only reason, but part of the reasons why we chose Airport Road is to divert that heavy traffic to go down Airport and have only the passenger cars go down Sixth Street. Now, that isn't, that's obviously not probably going to happen all the time. There are, are going to be mistakes where semis accidentally need go that way, because they're not used to it, it's new and everything. And hopefully they would go a different route, but in my experience, drivers typically take the fastest route to the spot that they get, they go to. So there might be some chance that they go through downtown, but we want to prevent that as much as possible. We want to keep it to passenger vehicles.
And I was on the call last night as well, listening to your discussions, and I believe I heard also that you would be looking at increasing signage? Is that what that?
Yes, definitely. We, we don't want to take away from our downtown, we want to add to our downtown, and we feel that the signage right now isn't sufficient enough to provide that for our business owners. So that's another thing that we are working on, is getting the right signage so we can attract people. So if there are any drive-by business, people will see that and want to, want to see that. But, but yeah, signage is something that we are working on, and not only for the intersect, the highway side of things, but in town as well.
The route to downtown from 30 would basically be the interchange at Airport Road eventually to South Maple and over S-14, S-14 back over 30, correct?
Yes, yep, it would go over S-14. So whenever, when, when these, when this interchange and this bridge is built, completely built, that is when they plan on closing down the at-grade intersections. I do not believe.
You're asking.
Go ahead, sorry.
So you're asking eventually, you're asking the DOT to pave South Maple at state cost as part of this project?
Yes, we would like them to, to pave Maple from 610th over to that overpass, that bridge.
And the reason being that by, because of the closures that they're doing, they're causing people, the only good access is on that road, it's now gravel road, correct?
Yeah, I mean, the big reason is it's a gravel road, and because of the, the traffic that will be diverted, you will get a lot, a lot more traffic over there rather than just, so it, I believe it needs to be paved.
And Darren, some part of South Maple is in the county? As opposed to in the unincorporated area?
Correct. It, a little over half of it being the county right now, about the railroad tracks splits it.
Okay. And, and Darren, you had, you mentioned South S. The issues with South S?
Correct. You could, you've got the pointer there. People that are going northbound where the pointer is, they're gonna want to go eastbound on Highway 30. Instead of backtracking on Maple to get onto 30, they're gonna cut across South S and go up over to 19th Street interchange.
So, and that's all gravel now?
Just South S. The rest is all paved.
Okay. So is South S a part of this overall plan as well, or is that something we'll all deal with later? What's your recommendation?
We could ask for it, but that's, I'd really doubt the DOT would take that into their plans.
The other question I would have would be for Jordan, well, maybe for both of you. What I've heard from farmers is not being at all happy about Airport Road. You know, it might be widened, but you're talking about big traffic, there's, there's different kinds of big traffic. There's large vehicles, there's semis, which are faster moving, and there's farm equipment, which is usually. and there's farm equipment, which is usually much slower moving. Having those both on Airport Road, even if you cut, if those curbs are gone and it's widened, I see as a real issue. Farmers are not happy about that. I know if the intersection is, if the interchange is at Sixth Tenth, DOT doesn't like to have interchanges more frequent than two miles apart. So that, that kind of means Six Hundred is out for an interchange. How do you feel about an overpass there? Because that would give farmers another way to get to the co-op for bio area.
On Six Hundred, you're saying, an overpass on Six Hundred?
Yes.
Uh, I'm not opposed to an overpass at Six Hundred at all. And I think if we have access on multiple roads to get people where they need to go, I think we need to do that. I think an overpass makes sense there rather than closing it down per se. I, yeah, I, I agree with that. I, I think there does need to be an overpass at Six Hundred. I just do not agree with an interchange at Six Hundred.
It would be nice at least if the city council would support an overpass there. And I, I was not able to listen in last night. Did you have discussion about the city council meeting?
It was briefly brought up, but there wasn't discussion on whether or not they supported it or not. And I, I can't speak on their behalf, but I don't see them not supporting it as long as it's not disrupting any families on that road, really this, this one. But I don't see that it would really disrupt that much, if any.
You know, there was somebody who was concerned because they had a, at least a century farm stand there and were concerned about there being an interchange there. But I don't see how an overpass is going to do anything there that's going to bother any of those.
Right, yep, I don't, I don't either. So I, I think an overpass would be a, a good decision for the DOT to make and to have that there.
I'd also say it would take some, take a lot of that, a lot of farm traffic, farm vehicles off of Airport. And I think you're going to want to not have everybody using Airport Road to get over to the co-op.
Yeah, and, yeah, and that's a great idea. You know, we could either have an additional road right here or something right here. That way, when they do get off Airport Road, they can go up and turn left or go down, go south and go back west and get on Six Hundred to Overpass. So there, yeah, I, I like the overpass idea and definitely could talk to the council about that if that's something that you would like me to.
Does anybody have any other, yeah, I, personally, I would. Let's see where we go on our, on our letter here. But personally, I think it would be good to have council supporting that if that's, if, if we do that. But let's, do we have any, Darren, do you have anything else you want us to, um, to present on this?
Uh, no, I think I've covered everything.
Okay, thank you. We will probably, well, we may need to rewrite a letter, but we can talk about that in a minute. Let me check and see if anybody else has come on the call who wants to comment on this. Darla, do you see anybody? Okay, so it doesn't seem like we have anybody else who wants to weigh in on this. So I'm going to open it up to the board for discussion unless you have more questions.
I don't have any additional questions at this particular, this particular time. I don't have any other questions either.
Okay, so I think we have three things before us. It's first, whether we want to weigh in on the interchange Airport Road versus another location, whether we want, I think we should or want to. And the second is then about if there, if we want to talk about something at Six Hundred Street. And the third thing is, do we want, what, what about South Maple? Do we want to include in, in our letter, that issue? Is there anything else you can see?
No, I, uh, I think that we could say that we're not opposed to the Airport Roads, okay, to the selection by the City of Nevada, their preference. But that it does create a greater concern for us about farm traffic. I would like to see more farm traffic emphasis here in the letter, okay? Uh, we could put it down on, you know, let's say, C number two, all right? Or we can carry that, about the fact, yes, it was recommended by the Nevada Interchange Task Force a few years ago, but we're really concerned about Airport Road truly being able to handle farm traffic, right? As, as much, so that was, that's our biggest concern. And, um, yes, I agree that we need to go ahead and request that they pave Maple and that little stretch of Six Ten down to Maple was healthy from Thirty to Maple. Darren, now you have a question. Darren, am I accurate that in this Airport Road scenario, the county will not have as much road to maintain as far as the offshoot from the interchange?
Uh, those are details we'd have to work out with the city and the DOT. But currently, Airport's split right down the middle, half city, half county. I don't know if the city has any annexation plans in the next five years for that area, but right now, it'd be half city, half county.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I can concur with what, Laura, is what you're saying too. I think the other area that I have concern, whether it's kind of more county or city, but is the, the turning of traffic on Lincoln Way. That, I think, you know, I'm, I'm just kind of envisioning that it may be oncoming cars, but you've got farm equipment going on there and semis.
That's what the Bible will make out.
Yeah, that, that, that gives me a lot of concern there. And I think that would certainly be addressed earlier rather than later.
And would that be a City of Nevada issue?
That's, that's why I said, that's why I'm not, I'm not sure.
So, so this letter's to the DOT, but that might be some feedback, Jordan.
To, to the city.
To the city for us.
Right, right, right. Um, and, and then, uh, I, I agree. I mean, if we can look at a potential overpass at Six Hundred, I do think, I think you're going to see that volume of traffic on Airport Road that we're going to have to have something, something else is going to be, be needed there. Uh, the farm equipment may be large, but certainly not going to be as fast moving as a large semi.
So at the Ames Economic Development Commission Executive Committee meeting this morning, we did talk a little bit about this. Now Ames pointing out that, you know, it's not, it's not their call, they don't really have a preference now at this point, or AEDC doesn't. But concern about traffic flow on Lincoln Highway is what we discussed again. And because, of course, there is going to be an interchange at Teller, which is Five Eightieth, which we all kind of forget, and that was the discussion this morning, is that what's going to happen at either Five Eightieth slash Teller and Lincoln Way also? So as conversations move forward to even the City of Nevada, it's not their issue, it's Ames' issue. But the discussion this morning was is that the AEDC is going to try and, and try and move it still onto the list for the ANPO. I told them about September eighth with the next discussion for ANPO. But Nevada needs to be made aware of this is that, that, that it's really a discussion about all of the traffic flow in between. So we've got Six Hundred slows, traffic turning, or hopefully going straight into the co-op. We've got then at Six Ten, we've got traffic coming up, maybe semis, et cetera. And then at Five Eightieth, we could have people, traffic and, and semis turning also. So just of note.
There may be lots of traffic controls needed there.
That's right.
Okay, um, so here's what I'm going to, I'm going to propose a motion, okay? So I've just been taking notes.
That's fine.
So I'm going to propose a motion and anybody can make it who wants to. The motion I'm going to propose is that we direct our engineer to redraft the letter to the DOT to include the following points. First, that the supervisors defer to the City of Nevada on the Nevada interchange recommendation. Second, that we concur with the City of Nevada that Airport Road needs to be improved if there's an intersection there. Third, we see a need for the DOT to pay South Maple and Six Ten to South Maple. And fourth, that we recommend the DOT create an overpass on Six Hundred to help rural residents continue to, um,
reach the co-op.
Reach, continue to, um,
Move farm equipment.
Move farm equipment and other vehicles across Highway Thirty. Yes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Please don't ask me to repeat what you said. I was very good, I was trying to write it down.
But she had her, yeah.
Shelley, I have notes. So you made the motion?
Yes, I did.
Supervisor Hiddens and also second by Supervisor Olson, any further discussion? Hiddens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. I would also suggest that we request of Jordan, I think we already have, maybe I'll make a little more formal request, that he discuss with the City of Nevada our, our wishes that they would consider supporting an overpass at Six Hundred and also take a strong look at the traffic control needs that will be created, the intersection of Airport Road and Lincoln Way if the interchange is at Airport Road. I don't know if we need a motion on that, maybe we just reflect.
Concurrent.
Concurrent, we have concurrents. Jordan? Is that okay with you?
Yep, so you want me to talk to the council about supporting an overpass at Six Hundred? Um, supporting paving Maple and traffic control at Airport and Lincoln.
Supporting paving Maple, thank you. I thought that was already in yours, but yes, we need to have that. Those are the three things that the city and the county can work together on with the DOT. And I think that's, I think that's appropriate that we do that.
Yeah, that's great, yeah, I can definitely do that.
Okay, is there anything, did we vote?
We didn't.
We did, we're done. Okay.
Ayes. Did we do ayes? Did you go through ayes?
Hiddens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye.
I'm sure we did.
Yeah.
We missed it.
Twice is better.
That's all right.
Twice doesn't hurt as long as we do it the same way.
Oh, no, we did concurrents, that's what we did.
We did concurrents, talking to Jordan, but I think that Shelley's right that I missed asking for a vote on, on the motion.
No, but it's okay.
Whatever, we took care of it.
Twice is better than zero.
As long as we do the same thing.
That's right.
Okay, we're done with that then, so I'm going to go on to public forum number two. This is comments from the public, items not on the agenda. I'm not sure that I'm seeing anybody from the public on the call right now, but if there is anybody, please raise your hand or unmute yourself. Hearing, seeing nothing, I'm going to close public forum number two. And we said this will be a short meeting, but if anybody's got anything that they want to share for under item eight, supervisors, why don't you go ahead and do so now?
Not really.
Not really, okay. We'll take that as it's Friday and we got the work done and we did get done on Tuesday because of the parade show. So that worked out very well. I want to thank everybody for being willing to have the special meeting today. Thank you, Darla, for being willing to help us, thank you, Sandra, thank you, Kyle, thank Shelley for being here.
Yep.
And everybody who was on the call. And I will entertain a motion for adjournment. Ooh, I saw, ooh.
Second.
Olson, aye.
Aye.
Merkin, aye, we are adjourned. Good work. Darren, you still on the call? Darren, you still on the call?